Good morning, I'm going to call to order this meeting of the Monroe County Board of Commissioners. It is Wednesday, June 9th, 2021, and we'll begin with our Commissioner's Statement, which I will go ahead and read. "We, the Monroe County Board of Commissioners, renew our commitment to welcome and protect the rights of all people regardless of age, race, color, creed, disability, sexual orientation, gender, gender identity, marital status, economic status, and national origin. And we affirm the right of every person to live peacefully and without fear, and we will fight and resist at every step discrimination and harmful policies, whatever their source. We also stand in support of our county public school systems, both RBB and MCCSC." And with that, I will note for the record that the meeting is currently being attended by myself and Penny Giffens. Commissioner Jones is unavailable today. And we will start with our department updates. And first on the list is Ms. Penny Cottle, good morning.
Good morning, thanks for having me again today. I don't have a lot of updates to share, but we do remain in a blue advisory. Our numbers are rather stable at the moment, so you know, that's good news. We want to see them continue to come down, but right for the moment, they are stable. Vaccinations continue to increase in Monroe County. We have topped our 50% mark, so 51.6% of our eligible population has been fully vaccinated, and 52.6% has received at least a first dose of vaccine. So while that is very good news, we're happy to to reach that 50% mark. We don't want to stop there. We want to continue to grow the number of people who are vaccinated in our community. And right now, we're seeing a slow and steady increase. We do anticipate that we will see continued increase with some of the requirements for vaccination, but regardless of that requirement, we encourage each and every person who is eligible to be vaccinated to walk in or schedule an appointment to be vaccinated. We are continuing to do outreach. We had our final outreach event at the Convention Center on Monday, and we did about 60 vaccinations. So that was a bittersweet day. I do want to again thank the Convention Center for their generosity, to thank all of our volunteers who have helped at the Convention Center, and we'll be posting a thank you on social media to them, but we are very, very grateful for that. We also have an outreach at Crawford Homes today, or not today, I'm sorry, on the 10th of this month from 1:00 to 3:00. And then we have continued outreaches planned in the upcoming weeks. So we will announce those as they come, just to kind of keep things going. I have talked a little bit about our vaccination rates by zip code, and in general, we range from 45% to 64% on terms of our major zip codes being fully vaccinated. And I will tell you, if you drill down to some of the very small zip codes, maybe some zip codes that cover county lines, so they're part of Monroe County, part of another county, some of those zip code areas will have an even smaller number of those who are fully vaccinated, but in general, we range from 45% to 64%. So a couple of weeks ago, on Friday, on our Friday Cast, I kind of made a challenge to see if we couldn't get all of our zip codes to top that 50% mark. So we've got a couple of days yet to see if we make that. So I'll announce that on Friday if we get there. And the other thing that I would like to announce, that starting on June 21st, the Monroe County Public Health Clinic, and that is the clinic on Miller Drive, will have availability for vaccines every Monday. And you can go on ourshot.in.gov to schedule that appointment. You'll be seeing that on that map. So we'll have that availability every week as we go forward, in addition to our outreaches. We do continue to do homebound. So you know, every time I see somewhat, any time that I see someone who's eligible for vaccine, who has gotten infected, but especially our senior citizens, if you can't get in to get vaccinated, please call Area 10 on Aging, or call 211, and they will help you get an appointment. Or if you can't get to get to us because you are homebound, we can make sure that vaccine is available to you. So please don't use that as a reason to not be vaccinated. And if you know someone in that situation, please help them get signed up so that we can get that vaccine to them. And that's what I have for you today.
Great, thank you so much, Ms. Cottle. We appreciate you and hard work of Board and staff and Dr. Sharp and everything that's gone on to date, and I know these clinics are going to be really important. So thank you for staying on top of that. Commissioner Giffens, comments, questions?
No, but there was a guest column in today's local paper by John Washbush that talked about people getting vaccinated, and it brought to mind the fact that if we had been invaded by a military force, we would have been all out fighting this. We've been invaded by a microbe, let's all out fight this, and we do that by getting those vaccinations.
Very good point.
Yeah, the unseen enemy. But yeah, it's been, it's really important that we continue this fight and we not let up. It's just because, you know, if you have been vaccinated, don't put your, don't take your foot off the gas, try to talk to folks around you and neighbors and friends and see if they have been vaccinated, haven't yet, if they need help, help them get an appointment and get this done.
Yes.
Yeah, we got to do this for our community, it's not just for ourselves. Yeah, excellent, thank you so much. And now we turn to Ms. Allison Moore, Emergency Management.
Good morning, Commissioners, thanks for having me this morning. I want to continue with our pet safety, and there's three things that I'd like to target this morning, and they really are for families in general, or households in general. We want to make sure that we have a family plan in place, and we want to make sure that when we're doing that, that we're including our pets as well. Make sure that you are including that plan with your extended family, elderly individuals, such as parents, that you may also be helping as well, and then, of course, your children, even if they don't live in your household. It's always good to include that spider web out from your home when making a family plan on how to, excuse me, on how to be prepared if a disaster happens. And so this week, or this month, we're targeting pets, and when we make that plan, we want to make sure that we are including all of our pets in those, in that planning piece, and how we'll handle getting that pet out safety and then, and staying with you wherever that may be. And one thing to keep in mind is oftentimes, if you have to stay in a shelter because your home has been destroyed in a disaster, pets sometimes are not welcomed at those shelters. So you also need to be mindful of that and to have a plan in place on what you might be able to do within an emergency with your pets if you need to be at a shelter and they cannot. And then within that, we encourage you to build an emergency kit. So have a Rubbermaid tub readily available, or a duffel bag that has the emergency things that you and your family need to quickly grab and go if something happens or your home might be destroyed. And then, of course, since we're sticking with pets, make sure that in that emergency kit, you are keeping those supplies that would be necessary. And last week, I talked about those supplies being food and medicine for the pets, so make sure that you have a supply of food and medicines and such that your pets would need in that emergency kit. And that, of course, will help you keep your family and your pets safe in an emergency and best prepared. I'd like to announce our blood drives for June, and like Ms. Cottle said, the Convention Center has been just amazing with all of our vaccine clinics and volunteering to allow us to have that facility. They've also been just very wonderful in working with us and collaborating with us on our blood drives, which we've had scheduled for over a year now. Every month, we have at least two drives. There was a couple of months where we even added a third in there, and they have been so gracious. Our blood drives this month are June 28th and the 29th, and that is a daytime drive on the 28th and an evening drive on the 29th. You can check out available times on the redcross.org website and see if there's a time slot that would work for you. And then lastly, I just want to let everyone know, it's going to be rainy today, rainy tomorrow, but then it is going to start getting sunny, and by Saturday, it's looking like high, mid to high 90s, so it's going to get super warm. I encourage you to be prepared for that. Make sure if you're going to be outdoors on that Saturday, that you're using, drinking lots of fluids, and of course, trying to, you know, get some shelter and get some shade and cool off when necessary. And of course, just to kind of tie back into that preparedness, last month was all those different things that we gave you for appliances, and then, of course, we've had heat safety in the past as well. So now that we're getting into those hot times, we encourage you to do all those helpful hints and tips that we provided for you these last few months, and that is all I have.
Excellent, thank you, Ms. Moore. Comments, questions? Commissioner Giffens?
Well, anybody that knows Ms. Moore knows what an animal lover she is, so I appreciate her adding this to it. And you sound a bit better this week, I have to say.
Thank you, I'm getting there.
Great, thank you so much, Ms. Moore, we appreciate you, and do take care. And we do not have an update from Highway today, so let me see if there are any other departments that wish to, department heads who wish to offer an update for the community? And I do not see any. All right, so we move on to number four in our agenda, which is public comments. This is reserved time for the public to provide comments for items not on our agenda. And you will have three minutes total time to speak, just like in our regular meeting items, and when you hear this tone. Can you hear that tone? It means you have 30 seconds left, great timing, 30 seconds left to complete your thoughts, finish your sentence, and you will be mercifully cut off at three minutes. We just have to do things that way to be fair. So you have, will have three minutes. And again, this is for items not on our agenda, and we'll begin. We do have Mayor Crowe from jail, Sam Crowe, does his hand raise?
Good morning, Commissioners, can you hear me? I just wanted to give a little update about the Correctional Center. Since Penny was talking about vaccinations, we are doing our second round of vaccines here in the jail today, and we are going to have between 25 and 30 inmates. So that'll put us up about, not quite half of the inmate population that has received vaccines so far. So I just wanted to give that little, let you know that we're trying to do our part here as well.
Excellent, thank you so much, that's really good news. All right, let's see if there's anyone else in the public who wishes to offer comments for items not on our agenda. Thank you for providing that information, and we will now move on to item five.
Move to approved minutes from June 2nd, 2021?
I will second that. Any comments, corrections, additions?
There was one small correction that I sent to Anita several days ago, so.
Great, excellent, thank you so much. And with that, Mr. Cockrell, will you please call the roll on approval of the minutes for June 2nd, 2021?
Commissioner Thomas?
Yes.
Commissioner Giffens?
Yes.
Motion is approved, two to zero.
Thank you, and next item, please.
Move approval of accounts payable for June 9th, 2021?
I will second that, and we have Mr. Miller here, good morning.
Good morning, Commissioners, I hope you're doing very well today. The total for accounts payable was $565,086.26. Nearly half of that, or $274,277.90, was for wheel and surtax distribution for the month of April, followed by $72,856 for Vermeer of Indiana for the purchase of a chipper for our Highway Department. And finally, $71,891.69 was for advanced correctional for onsite medical and mental health services per contract for the month of July.
Great, thank you so much, Mr. Miller, and comments, questions? Commissioner Giffens?
I was pleased to see the chipper on there for the Highway Department, especially as we approach possible tornado season that'll be put to use. Hopefully, we won't need it for that, but.
Thank you so much, and let's see if there's any public comment on this agenda item. And I do not see any. So with that, thank you again, Mr. Miller. With that, Mr. Cockrell, will you please call the roll on approval of claims to account payable, June 9th, 2021?
Commissioner Thomas?
Yes.
Commissioner Giffens?
Yes.
Motion is approved, two to zero.
Thank you.
Excellent, thank you so much, and we will now move on to new business and our, our first item.
Move to approve Monroe County Entity Reimbursement Grant for COVID-19 expenses. Fund name, County General, fund number 1,000, in the amount of $292,442.67.
I will second that. Good morning, Ms. Gregory.
Good morning, everyone. As you know, this is the last of the applications and claims for the county's entity reimbursement program, otherwise known as the CARES program through the county. So we reviewed 35 applications and their detail a couple of weeks ago at a work session, and we decided to come back today to discuss further and answer any further questions you may have. So I am happy to do this as you'd like, I can go through one by one, or I can just clarify anything that requires clarification, however you'd like to proceed.
I would ask that at least we have a listing of just entity in the total, just for the public certification.
Absolutely, okay, so the grant, yes, the grand total requested, after adjustments, of course, as you know, I adjusted the Motels of Bloomington just for the eligible items, but the grand total to date is requested items for this meeting, $292,442.67. That includes 35 different entities, including St. Thomas Lutheran Church, Tommy D's Windows, Faith Lutheran, Elaine's Cleaning, Need More Coffee, Convention and Visitors Bureau of Monroe County, Yonko's Little Zagrab of Bloomington, Monroe County Public Library, Litwin Enterprises, The Farm Restaurant, Monroe County Youth Soccer, RCV Construction, Solution Tree Incorporated, Campus Tutoring Services, Michael's Uptown Cafe, Cleaning Revolution, Bloomington Playwrights Project Incorporated, St. Mark's United Methodist Church, Bloomington Beauty Supply, another claim for The Farm Restaurant, Christian Student Fellowship at IU, Bloomington Handmade Markets, Hickory Audiology LLC, University Risk Management, Two Rats Incorporated, which is actually Crazy Horse, Detour Brewing, they're doing business as Function Brewing, Dimension Mill, Jerry G. Miller, AEA Designs LLC, Catherine J. Forgax, I think is her last name, Cave Group, it's Malibu Grill, Commercial Services, RVC Holdings, a C3 Bar, and Create a Smile PXD, which is a dentist's office, and then Motels of Bloomington LLC, which is the Home Two Suites in town.
Excellent, thank you so much. We'll turn first to Commissioner Giffens. I will note as well that I know that Ms. Owens is standing by if we have questions as well, the grants administrator, so, but Commissioner Giffens, do you have comments or questions?
I'm not sure if this is the correct time to bring this up, but I'm not positive, not in favor of granting some of the reimbursements that were requested by AEA Designs LLC. I'm not sure that we should be paying for extended warranty that they purchased on their machines. I understand that they had to change their business kind of operation, that's fine, I'm glad that they were able to do that, but I also don't think that we should be paying for some of the ink, that is just a cost of regularly doing business, and really isn't related to COVID, I don't think, but I'm glad that they're flourishing. So I would like to propose that we decrease the total that they requested. I think, if my addition is correct, I think that that would result in a reduction of
I have.
That would be the $3,990 for the warranty, there were three inks at $39.99 each, and then for black ink at $79.98.
I had $4,400, which.
Okay, could be.
That goes on, so I had $4,400 on that.
Okay, so a reduction of $4,400?
Yeah.
I will, I will look again, of course.
Okay.
Okay, just, just a side note, we have previously approved warranty, or, you know, a warranty on products that we've, okay.
I just felt like this extended beyond when we hope COVID will be here, you know, because it was a three-year warranty.
Absolutely.
Are you okay with the $4,400 number? Because it is basically, it would, Penny, Ms. Cottle, I'm sorry, Ms. Giffens. Oh my gosh.
Too many pennies.
Too many pennies.
Yeah, 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 if that's what, in fact, that total is, yeah.
Yeah, yeah, okay.
I forget sometimes that I haven't slept very well, so.
What is the, what, did you have another, you said you had a few, did you have another?
No, no.
Okay.
I just, yeah.
Okay, so I just have a couple of things to note, and, and I agree that the expendables are something that we shouldn't really cover, and we're, they've made a request for the full amount pretty much, so I think that that's a fair deduction. I agree with that. And I will note that we have provided some assistance to the mill in the past, and this is on the agenda again, and I just find it kind of sad that we are helping out, I'm glad we're helping them out, but it's too bad that it's a city of Bloomington redevelopment commission they're building, and they're reaching out to us for help. But I, I'm happy to provide that help. I think that anything we can do to keep our business community going is well worthwhile. For folks who are curious about the number of restaurants, a lot of this has to do with outdoor speeding and providing something that they hadn't provided before, and you know that that could be quite expensive. And so there are a number of really, you know, really good about the fact that we've managed to put this program together with the county council to make this happen. And I'm so glad, and it's kind of too bad that it's over, but maybe that means we're, we're on our way economically, but we could do something, a little something to help out the community and to keep everybody going. Did you have any other comments or questions, Commissioner Giffens?
I really want to thank Ms. Gregory and Ms. Owens for their work in making this happen. I know that this was added responsibility, especially for Ms. Gregory. She has not let up, and it's made a big difference. I think you kept a lot of people going through all this, so thank you.
Yeah, that is a great point. Administering this has not been easy. We're so grateful for Ms. Owens and Ms. Gregory, and I know Ms. Malone also played a role in that too, for quite some time, especially at the beginning, or setting things up. So thank you all, and thank you to community members who reached out and let us know what you needed. We've, it's been an honor and a pleasure to provide that assistance, it really has, so, and I know it's been a lot of work, because getting these applications together is not easy, there's a lot of back and forth, and removing items, and making sure all the forms are in place, all the tax forms, all the important paperwork. I've dotted and T's crossed, as they say, so this is really a great thing to be able to do. So I will go ahead and make a motion to amend the total amount to $288,042.67, which reflects that $4,400 deduction.
Second.
Great, we have a motion and a second. Mr. Cockrell, will you please call the roll on the amendment?
Commissioner Thomas?
Yes.
Commissioner Giffens?
Yes.
Motion is, the amendment is approved, two to zero.
Great, thank you so much. And with that, let's see if we can, if anyone has any public comments on this item. Again, just click on the raised hand button at the bottom of the screen. Mr. Shelton, good morning.
Good morning, Jim Shelton speaking for the Chamber. On behalf of the Chamber, on behalf of the business community, we want to thank you guys again for this effort that's been ongoing now for a number of months. It has helped a number of businesses survive, and we need those businesses here for employment, et cetera. So thank you very much, thank you to your staff who've done all the hard work, and we really, really, really appreciate it, so thank you.
Thank you so much. Yeah, it feels like they get to do all the work and we get to have the pleasure of making the announcement and voting on it. I'll be right with that. Okay, see if there's anyone else. I don't see anyone else raising your hand to speak. So with that, Mr. Cockrell, will you please call the roll on the Monroe County Entity Reimbursement Grant for COVID-19 Expenses?
Commissioner Thomas?
Yes.
Commissioner Giffens?
Yes.
Motion is approved, two to zero.
Thank you so much, and thank you again, Ms. Gregory, Ms. Owens, thanks.
Thank you, Commissioners.
Next item, please.
Move to approve Indiana Youth Services Association Contract.
I will second that. Mr. Malone, good morning.
My computer took a second, thank you so much. So we have a contract with the Indiana Youth Services Association, this is, these are pass-through dollars that DCS gives to IYSA to disperse, to approve youth services bureaus. We have to write the grant every two years, and they disperse the money through nine-month billing reimbursements annually. And so this is about, I believe, around $37,500 that goes directly to services in Binkley House Emergency Youth Shelter, staff, as well as, well, our case, half our case manager's salary, and then director's staff.
Great, thank you so much. Comments, questions? Commissioner Giffens?
This is one of the most detailed kind of grant things I've had to look at in terms of what they prescribe for you, that's just amazing, but thank you so much for going out and getting this.
Excellent work, as always, and let's see if there's any public comments for this item, just raise your hand at the bottom of the screen. I do not see anyone, so with that, Mr. Cockrell, will you please call the roll on the Indiana Youth Services Association Contract?
Commissioner Thomas?
Yes.
Commissioner Giffens?
Yes.
Motion is approved, two to zero.
Thank you so much.
Thank you very much.
Great, and with that, we'll move on to item C.
Move to approve New Era Technology for Replacement of Software and Hardware for Court System. Fund name, cumulative capital slash software, fund number 1138-30041-0000, in the amount of $25,938.
Excellent, I will second that. Good morning, Mr. Evans. Excellent. I will second that. Good morning, Mr. Evans.
Good morning. So this agreement is to provide an upgrade to the software that the courts use to record all their hearings and trials. Obviously, that is a fundamental part of their operation. The current version that we had been using was not compatible after we had upgraded the operating system on the court computers. So that forced a situation where we had to upgrade to a newer version. And that is what this represents. It also is going to allow us to replace all of the recording hardware, with the exception of the microphones in all 11 of the courtrooms.
Excellent. Huge project, really. Comments, questions? Commissioner Giffens?
Well, I was pleased to see that there was already a plan in place to do just a couple of courtrooms at a time, so that we're not disrupting the function of the courts.
Yeah, that's the only way you could do something like that.
What are some of the key benefits of this?
Of the recording software?
Yes, the new software.
Well, so it's the fundamental way that the courts are keeping their record. And so essentially, it integrates with a digital clock in the courtroom. All of the microphones in the courtroom feed into a centralized mixer. And it essentially takes the place of back in the olden days, the court reporter would have to sit there with the little machine, you know, that I never could understand, because there weren't enough buttons to be a full keyboard. This is basically creating a court-accepted recording of the proceedings.
And this works well with the, if we ever have to go back to Zoom hearings again. This all works well with that other technology, if we need it.
Yes, yes, we have several courtrooms that we have set it up to work alongside Zoom.
Excellent, excellent. Thank you so much. Let's see if there is any public comment on this item. I know that Ms. Abraham is on the participant list, but I didn't know if she wanted to chime in. Okay, I don't see any hands raised. So thank you, Mr. Evans. And with that, Mr. Cockrell, will you please call the roll on the new era technology for replacement of software and hardware for the court system?
Commissioner Thomas?
Yes.
Commissioner Giffens?
Yes, and I believe Mr. Evans was referring to a stenographer.
Motion is approved two, zero.
Okay.
The person that, you know, that was a stenography machine.
I'll do it now.
Oh, there's Ms. Abraham. I'm sorry, did you have anything you wanted to add?
Can you guys hear me okay?
Yes.
Okay. No, I just want to thank you. The judges will be thrilled to know we are finally going forward with this FTR. My one question, though, Eric, for you, I did see in the proposal that I know in the future, if they upgraded again, there would be that additional cost. Is that something that you would go back to the commissioners for, for them to cover the updates? I think you said like $3,500 a courtroom or something, and you didn't mention that just now.
Well, yeah, so what I think she's talking about is, on the proposal, there were two options. One, to upgrade to a newer version, and then one, which is a three-year upgrade assurance program. Essentially, we'd be paying, instead of $26,000, we'd be paying $76,000 and get upgrade assurance for the next three years, which would basically mean we would get subsequent versions under that cost. In shopping around for this, I talked directly with FTR, the manufacturer of the software. And they indicated to me that they were looking at going from their current sales model of distributed authorized resellers to a more subscription-based thing, kind of like Office 365 with future versions. And so I really, it is my recommendation that we do not go with a three-year program when I think the price is going to be changing.
Oh, okay, maybe I just misread that then, in the part that you had squared in your box, that you were saying investment for the five to six single version upgrade is the $25,938, but it did say future upgrading at $34.95, so maybe I just misread that.
If we, if we bought it from that company, it probably would be that price, but I think
I thought that was from
Yeah.
Okay.
Yeah.
Thank you so much for all your work. We'll be thrilled. We'll get with you, Eric, on when you're looking at getting that all set up.
Excellent. Thank you so much, Ms. Abraham. Thank you, Mr. Evans. And with that, we will move on to item D.
Move to approve ordinance 2021-22, Southern Meadows Plan Unit Development Outline Plan.
I will second that. Good morning, Ms. Nestor Gillan.
Morning, commissioners. How are you doing? Thanks for hearing me this morning. So I'm stepping in this morning for Drew Myers. I'm going to go ahead and share my screen real fast with one of the conditions of approval that I wanted to point out to you just at the beginning and make sure you would like to continue. It was brought to our attention that the ordinance within your packet was missing a few added conditions that had happened at the plan commission level and should have been included in your packet for the commissioner. So I've put those in bold here on your screen, and some of them are underlined. I can explain that in a little bit. But just to let you know, the plan commission did include these conditions verbatim. It was just left out of the commissioner's packet. So I'll give you a moment or two to look through these, and then we can have any discussion. Otherwise, I'm happy to move ahead.
Ms. Nestor Gillan, what does it mean to work with the Monroe County Highway Department to install that four-way stop?
Sure, yeah. So the highway department reviewed a traffic study from the petitioner themselves put together, and they had come up with the determination that a four-way stop intersection would be needed at Rogers and that road if two out of three petitions in the area were approved, and it was on this petition to make sure that it was completed. So this is the reason we would be able to kind of strengthen that language if they were to go forward with this development and with approval. They'd have to go through a subdivision, but we wanted to make sure that the commitment would be there in order for them to agree to putting in the fees or the cost to put in a four-way stop at Rogers and that road, which was requested under the traffic study that the highway department reviewed.
It also doesn't seem very strong to say on item E that there's a commitment to coordinate to potentially build out.
Yes.
Does seem like a very strong statement to me.
Good question. This was a discussion at the Plan Commission Administrative Meeting, and the reason that the language is rather not as strong as we would like it to be is that the roses, it's a separate property owner off-site, separate from this petition site. And so in coordination with legal and the plan commission, we really couldn't require it as a condition of approval, because they, they aren't, they don't have a way to, you know, acquire the property against the owner's will. And so they were going to, they had talked to the roses and wanted to work with them to build out this pedestrian bridge that would really create some connectivity on the east side of Rogers, but wasn't something that we could quite require.
But if the owners of the roses, if they agreed to this, who would be financially responsible then from building the bridge?
It would be the petitioner.
Because I don't feel like that's specified here, so.
So these are the added conditions that were approved five to four by the plan commission. If you feel comfortable, I can, I can go ahead and present this case, and we can move forward. I did have a conversation with the petitioner's representative this morning, just to note that we had found this and wanted to point this out. And they're okay with the continuance, however, they're also okay with proceeding ahead with this as the final hearing for this.
I will note as well that it's probably just because PowerPoint is the way PowerPoint is, but I will note as well that number seven is bolded, but it is actually from the original conditions. So it's
It was included. Yes, yes, it was included. So I'll go ahead and explain. So the bolded ones were added from the last preliminary plat approval, but the underlined ones were missing in the ordinance. So number seven didn't make it into your packet, but eight, nine, and part of B and E did not. So that's the differentiation. Yes.
Right. And, and I would say that the conversation about item 3E, I get where, what Commissioner Giffens is saying. I would say that item 3E was discussed, and it's in the minutes from our plan commission meetings. It was discussed, and so it's, it's evident from the minutes what is meant in terms of the build-out and who is, who is going to pay for it if it's possible to do this. We don't even know that yet, so. Good questions. Commissioner Giffens, are you okay continuing with this case today? Or would you like to put this off one week? What are your feelings?
I'm ready to go ahead.
I am as well. And so Ms. Nestor Gillan, if you would, please proceed. Thank you so much. Take a deep breath.
Yeah.
All right.
So this is ordinance 2021-22. This is a proposal for a new planned unit development outline plan. It contains two parcels that equal 37 acres. The property location here is on South Rogers Street, South College Drive, and the zoning is currently medium-density residential. Just a little bit of background and summary for this petition. It was rezoned to medium-density residential within the last couple of years. And then there was a new owner that purchased the property and would like to request a subsequent rezon to PUD. And so right now, the petitioners under this PUD are proposing to construct 95 paired single-family residences or attached single-family residences, and that they would share one wall on each side. So there'd be 190 lots, 95 structures. Many of the aspects of the previously approved Southern Meadows subdivision under the medium-density residential subdivision remain the same, though I will point out a few differences as I go along. So overall, the PUD proposes an additional five structures compared to the approved medium Southern Meadows major subdivision, but it's doubling the density. So continued background here, so Southern Meadows major subdivision was approved January 21, 2020, and then again amended August 2020. And that was to allow for some amendments with the property to the west, Blind Swirls LLC. There was some transfer, transfer of property in accordance with a allowance to go through their property for the that road connection and extension. So I want to point out that regardless of approvals for this PUD or the Blind Swirls LLC, if they were to come again for another petition, that road extension is already approved and is already in the works. So underlying this petition request, there's allowance for 90 single-family lots on this property as it stands today. So the location here, as I mentioned, South Rogers Street. It does have frontage along South Rogers and College, but the connection along the west side would actually be an extension of that road through an easement. The current zoning, as I mentioned, is medium-density residential, and the comprehensive plan has this as urbanizing area mixed residential. And just a comparison of the design standards here for what is zoned currently and what they're proposing. So under the medium-density residential, they have a gross density of 4.8 units per acre, which is a .21 acre lot size. And under the proposed PUD, they're looking at a 5.2 units to the acre, which would also allow for a .05 minimum lot size. So there are more open space here. And then minimum lot width would be 60 feet under MR and 30 feet under the proposed PUD, with the maximum height also increasing under the proposal to be 45 feet instead of the allowed 35 feet. And then, so you'll see down below, under the medium-density residential, there is an open space allowance, 60, it's a 60%, so that would be per lot, as with the PUD requires a 25% open space of the entire area as defined in Chapter 811. So Drew had put together, and the petitioner put together, a kind of a comparison of a previous cover, and this was in part requested by the MS4 coordinator. So in all, the new proposal, would it actually decrease 450 square feet total of a previous cover? But that's pretty much equal when you're looking at this amount of a previous cover. It's 33% of the site would be under previous cover at either petition. So because of the smaller lot size, .05 acre, you have smaller home sizes. And so even though there's more density, not total increase of a previous cover, an actual decrease. So the petitioner did commit to some architectural diversity and design standards to be more aligned with the comprehensive plan in this area. And there is an illustration of this a little bit later on in the petition, and then it's also included in the conditions of approval. This is the site conditions of this property. There is sewer and water in the proximity. There's also flood plain on the northwest side of the property, and karst features present throughout the site. And then the slope of the site is relatively flat throughout, so they were able to stay under the 15% threshold. The petitioner did receive a study from Vet Environmental Engineering for the site that showed a few karst areas that are present on the site, and those have been updated on the preliminary plat. The infrastructure and access for this property. So they did receive originally a CDU capacity letter and electric will serve. And then they also put together a developer plan that was approved by, preliminarily reviewed and approved by the highway department for the extension of West that Road at South Rogers. So as far as roads, the project served by South Rogers via an existing easement. And then they're also going to be connecting to South College Drive. And then new public roadways will be established, shown on the site plan. I'll also note that they're required to do off-site improvements as required under the conditions, including turn lane on South Rogers and South Golden State 37 to accommodate the increase in traffic. As far as sidewalks, there'd be a minimum four-foot wide sidewalk along all new public roadways, and then a multi-use path that they're connecting of the former rail corridor. And they're also going to connect to Clear Peak Elementary and then Stube to the Oklahoma Home Community to the north. They'll also be connecting that along the Blind Swirls LLC frontage type that's required by this developer. Santeri sewers will be constructed, new public roadways. Stormwater would be managed under three detention areas in accordance with the drainage ordinance. Water supply would also be required. Street lighting would be required and provided, and then public utilities, gas, electric, communications, all of them. So the petitioner did reach out to the fire department and MCCSC, and both had provided comments and, yeah, negative here. And then they did put together a couple of illustrations, or a few illustrations that I'll show through the slides here. So some things to note, they are allowing the connection to College Drive, which I'll show you with my mouse. So this connection here is actually agreed to be included under Phase Two of the development, whereas right now, this is pretty similar design to what's approved, but just double the density and no alleyway through the middle. But this would otherwise be constructed as part of Phase Four, so they're moving that closer to the earlier stages of construction. But you can see kind of the open space areas that's been proposed. You also see in yellow the karst areas, which also relate to the Vet Environmental Study. And then they also have an alleyway that would be running north-south. So connection to that road have an alleyway that would be running north, south. So connection to that road over to College Drive, they have two ways in and out. And relatively grid-like system, although the block lengths are a bit long, as we recognized at the plan commission. So breaking this down a little bit further, they do show a dog park as part of their open space, usable open space, and then some other community amenities throughout the site. And then kind of the southern area of the site, some common areas. And there's also going to be some tree preservation that occurs along the buffering of the site as well. So the petitioner has put together a architectural diversity illustration. So they have shown a variety of elevations and exteriors and the combinations. So this is in response to the comprehensive plan, where really what you're trying to avoid is a monotony of housing types and designs. And so you want to go through and have something that looks diverse in terms of looks and exterior. And so they're offering, you know, colors in terms of facade elevations to give a look of a more diverse housing type that goes on throughout the community. And then here are some examples, illustrations of those elevation type differences, and then a few illustrations of the facade and color differences. This is the original Southern Meadows 90 lot subdivision. So as you can see, it's pretty similar in terms of the design, but there's no alleyway. And also, the college drive access was part of phase four later on in the development. The petitioner did receive letters of support from different groups and the community, including Cook, BDC, and EASCI. Those are all on the packet, as well as the Limited Board of Realtors and Farmers in the County, along with others. The petitioners also received a few letters of opposition here that we have put into the packet regarding concerns of density. These as well in the packet. And then the Plan Commission Administrative Meeting, so this was voted on during the May 4th meeting, and it was given a positive recommendation to the commissioners by a vote of five to four with the following conditions. And here's where I'll read these into the record just for clarification, and then we can ask the big questions that are posed in this. So number one, borrowed sites throughout the subdivision can be permitted no matter of the phasing. Number two, the abandoned railroad bed to be used as a trail should be placed in a P simple lot and built out as part of the subdivision. Number three, the petitioner is to submit written commitments for off-site work to be conducted with approval of this project. A, multi-use trail to Clear Creek Elementary from Southern Meadows subdivision per the approved preliminary plat. B, connection to that road per the approved plan submitted. Work with Monroe County Highway Department to install a four-way stop at the intersection of Rogers and That Road, along with other required improvements as required by the highway engineer. C, highway department approved. Off-site improvements to South Roger Street and South Old State Road 37 per the approved plan submitted. D, multi-use trail along South Roger Street terminating at the south end of Blind Swirls LLC property per the approved plans submitted under the 2019 Southern Meadows approval. E, a commitment to coordinate with the roses to potentially build out a pedestrian bridge across the property with parcel number noted. Four, developer commits to grant SCA single conservancy area per chapter 829 should new singles surface prior to lot development. A geotechnical engineer must be present on the site during initial masquerading of any phase, especially during road and detention pond construction. If an issue arises, the petitioner's engineer will be required to notify staff and provide any alternate plans. Five, drainage details of floodway crossing at the west entrance and remaining drainage calculations are to be approved by the MS4 coordinator prior to issuance of any grading permits. Six, remaining drainage calculations are to be approved prior to preliminary plat approval. Seven, developer agrees to construct roadway connection to South College Drive as part of phase two, as shown on the PUD outline plan. Eight, homes immediately adjacent to one another will vary in facade, color, and/or material at the time of building permit application. Nine, add a pedestrian trail between Abington and Quinn Avenue that connects east to west. Also note that the prior conditions of approval from the preliminary plat of Southern Meadows to allow for 90 lots, the items in red were struck, and those included items that we could add back in for the subdivision approval. So this is the rezon. And then six was maintained, but it's already been recorded. So we took that out because it's already been met.
Great. Thank you so very much. Appreciate all of your hard work in putting the presentation together. And let's see if Commissioner Githens has any questions at this point.
This was a lot to get through. Sorry. When I was reading through it, it indicates that, and this is not what you presented, but it indicated in the plans that an HOA would have to put in the streetlights. Is that what would typically be required in this type of a development?
Good question. So street lighting, if you're in the urbanizing area, it is a requirement of the subdivision control ordinance. So it would have to be shown prior to the any subdivision being approved. So if this PUD is approved, the next step for the developer is to apply for a preliminary plat major subdivision that goes through the staff review and plan commission. At that time, we would check to make sure streetlights were included on the plans. And then whoever is paying for those, it would have to be part of the improvements installed prior to permitting of building permits.
I guess the. It's just that HOAs are developed, are, you know, they kind of are organic and they come about when people purchase either a lot or a building or, you know, a residence. And so I don't know how you can put the cost of the streetlights onto the HOA that doesn't even exist.
That may have been, Penny, I remember from the original Southern Meadows proposal that they were talking about the cost for maintaining and the power, electric costs of the streetlights to be put on the HOA. I don't know that, I'm not sure about the install. I can.
Okay, okay.
Yeah.
I may have misunderstood it also. I would like to also point out, there was an article about this in today's local paper also. And it, it implied that the commissioners will get to weigh in on how expensive these homes will be. That's not the case. The developer has the option to build very expensive homes on, or what could put in a lot of money into 190 homes and could make smaller homes on the approved, the current approved 90 lot subdivision. So we have nothing to do with what, what the developer chooses with regard to the type of, of, well, the expensiveness, I guess, of anything that would be put in. So I wanted to clarify that for the public.
Yeah. That's a, that's a really, really good point. We can't. The petitioner may express that that is their intention, but we cannot hold them to an intention. We cannot enforce a certain price per unit, for example, in any way. So we, we're, your petitioner will tell us their intention. But what we're approving is specifically this planned unit development, which relates to the lots and the configuration of the houses on the lots. But we cannot, we cannot require anything else.
I also, when I was looking at the different designs that were presented, well, it indicated that all of them will have garages. Does that mean that some of the units will access the garage through the alley? Because some of these show no garage through the front of the, the building.
That is a good question, Penny. And they did do a parking analysis. There, I think that the petitioner, you know, would be better suited to answer that. I'm not absolutely sure if every single unit is going to have a two-car garage. I would defer to them for that.
It indicated each unit would have, I thought, said that each unit would have a one-car garage with space for different numbers of vehicles on either the driveway or whatever. But it indicated that each unit would have a single car garage.
Yes. So that may be in relation to the alleyway access and rear drive access that would be for these middle lots here. They would have rear access to the back. That's how they would pull into their homes.
Did you, did you have other questions, Commissioner Githens? Because we can, we can ask the petitioner because they're up next.
Well. You know me, I have to have time to incubate things. So. Please go ahead.
We can come back for more questions of staff if that would be helpful for you, Commissioner Githens.
It would be. Thank you.
Sure. Yeah, no problem. It's easy to do. We've got, we do have the petitioner, petitioner's representative presence. Is there anything you would like to add?
Yes, this is Kendall Kenoke Smith Design Group. Thank you, everybody, for hearing our petition today. I'm here with Tom Wininger, the petitioner. And I just wanted to clarify the question about the garages. We originally were not intending on doing garages on every unit, but after the highway department reviewed the project, they requested garages. And so we are now going to do a single car garage on each unit. However, as Commissioner Githens stated, some of the garages are on the alleys. So they're actually in the bottom and the rear of the units, and they're not coming out the front for some of those units. But the rest will be coming out the front. So we are providing a minimum of four parking spaces per unit, per the highway department's request there. And Tom Wininger's here. I think he wanted to say a few words to.
Hello, Tom Wininger. Third generation builder in this county. Built a lot of different product. My father and grandfather built a lot of paired product, which is what we're proposing here. Spring House Ridge, Cameron Row, Silver Creek, St. Remi, Windermere Woods, Quail Ridge, Copper Tree, just to name a few. And so pair product, I feel like works. These are all good communities. They're all very, I'm very proud of all of them. And I think pairs work. And that's how we can hopefully get workforce housing, which is what I want to do. Give the next generation the opportunity to own a home in this county. And, and we have to do that because Cook, Cadlin, and Baxter, they need it for their people. And we need to give them a place to go. And as far as density, you have to have it in order to get that, to make that number of workforce housing. Paid $1.9 million for the ground. Paid $2.8 million to improve the ground to get to the lot. We can do the math pretty quick and figure out that, you know, if you divide it by 90, you're at $52,000 a lot. And I can't get workforce housing at that. If we divide it by 190, we're at 24,000. And I could probably make this happen, give the next generation opportunity to own something. And there's nothing, right now, I looked up on the MLS before this, and there, there's zero homes in this county under $250,000 a year in there. And it is a great time to own a home, 3% interest rates. But these kids, they don't have a chance. So that's what I'm here for. That's what I'm all about. I believe Kendall did a great job. I believe Smith Design does a great job every time. And I wanted to do this. And I want to keep doing it. Because there's going to be a continued need for it. Cadlin hired 1,200 people. Cook's hired 300. They both want to hire more. You know, we got to give these kids an opportunity. Cook's importing people from 15 counties to come work here. 16,000 people come here every day. This project is six minutes to Cadlin, eight minutes to Park 48. Let's give them a chance.
And we're happy to answer any further questions you have. Thank you.
Okay. Let's see. Commissioner Githens, your question, it appears, was addressed, but do you have any others for the petitioner?
Yes. What, what level income do you think people would have to have? You, you mentioned in the application, a price point of $250,000.
I talked to a couple bankers in this town. Sorry for cutting you off. But Owen County and People State Bank. And they say that somebody making $18.27 an hour can afford a $250,000 loan. And Cadlin, I know, is hiring at $20 an hour, and they can't get enough people. They're bussing them in from Twin Lakes, parking over there and shuttling them over, you know, so.
So what kind of down payment and what of interest rates are you talking about? Because you also have to take in, it's not supposed to be more than 30% of somebody's income for housing. And you have to take into account not only the cost of the mortgage, but the cost of utilities is supposed to go into that, along with the cost of homeowner's insurance, I believe, and property taxes.
Yes, ma'am. You can talk, you can talk to Matt Montgomery, and he's a loan officer down in Owen County, and he could definitely walk you through it. Alan Bouvier, same at People State Bank. Talk to both of them, and they can walk you all through it. And I'd love to go down and get these kids pre-approved and move them into these houses. Give them a shot.
So is this for a single person earner? Or do there have to be two earners in the household to afford this?
Just $18, one of them, $18.27. It's because the interest rate's so low. It's a great time.
Yeah. I, I got onto the IU Credit Union's mortgage calculator. And, and just for the. Without taking into account sort of mortgage and, I'm sorry, without taking into account anything except the utilities and the mortgage, you would need a monthly income of around $5,000. Which is a lot more than 18.27 an hour. And if you take into account, and this is for people working 40 hours a week, not 35. And if you take into account the property taxes and homeowner's insurance, you're up to over $30 an hour.
You, I'm sure you'd be more than welcome to call Matt Montgomery or Alan Bouvier, and they can walk you through it. I just talked to them about it. I'm not going to dissect it or quibble about it right now. But there's definitely nothing in this county under $250,000 a year in there. And that's what I'm proposing to do. And that's what, that's what I want to do.
When I was doing some of these calculations, and I can tell you what my assumptions were and things like that, and I'm a former math teacher. At a 20-year fixed with nothing down at a 2.75 interest rate. Without that property tax and homeowner's insurance thrown in, it's still at almost $30 an hour.
Try 30 years.
30 years doesn't change it a whole lot.
I'm not going to tell them what their business is. I just asked them point blank, both of them, what that somebody needed to make in order to afford a $250,000 payment. And that was the number they come up with. And I can give you their number if you don't give them a call.
Commissioner Githens, did you have other questions for the petitioner?
Sorry, I'm trying to look through all my notes and everything else here, because, yeah.
That's right. While you're looking, I have a question for staff, and then we can come back to you if that's okay?
Sure.
I'll give you a second.
Thank you.
Ms. Nestor Gilman, hey, is there a reason why this is a PUD? This got raised by somebody in the community and not just. This got raised by somebody in the community and not just a, a higher, a proposal for a higher density zone?
Yes, so the petition site is currently zoned medium density residential. We have one more zoning that designation that is denser than that, which is high density residential. However, the minimum lot area is 0.14 acres. So although the gross density would be higher, it would actually be resulting in 0.14 acre lot sizes. So they're requiring, they're requesting 0.05, so we don't have anything that accommodates that.
Thank you. Okay, back to Commissioner Giffens.
Yeah, what's the purpose of a 0.05 minimum lot area? Because I don't think you could build a paired home or even half of a paired home on something that size.
Yeah, this is Kendall. I can respond to that. Jackie, can you go to the overall plan? So basically, the 0.05 is the smallest lot size that we're showing? Yeah, actually, right up there, yes, those three, those are 0.05 acres large. And so these are, or I'm sorry, point, yes, 0.05 acres. So these lots are 30 feet wide rather than the 60. So basically, what we did is we took all of the lots that were in the existing Southern Meadows and just split them in half. And with, you know, the lot size, that's kind of what it came out to be for those. So we just wanted to make sure we could accommodate all of them. You know, there may be a way to give a little bit bigger of a backyard and make the lots a little bit bigger. But at the end of the day, these lots are just 30 feet wide, and the smallest width of lot that's allowed in county zone is 50 right now in the high-density residential that Jackie mentioned. So that was kind of the genesis for the, for the 0.05.
But 0.05 would have indicated that, if you said that they split the original one, that would have meant the original one was at 0.10. And I don't think that's what was in the current approved usage here.
Yes, we reconfigured them a little bit to kind of give more common areas. Planning staff requested that common or open space be put in common areas for the PUD. So we had to kind of reconfigure. A lot of the common area was in individual lots in the prior petition. That's the reasoning for that. Yeah, there you go. So as you can see, especially on the south side, you know, a lot of the common area that we show on this petition was just part of the lots before.
So the, the two lots up there that Ms. Nestor Jellin had her cursor on, what size were those lots previously or under the current plan?
I think they were the, right at the minimum, the 0.21, I believe, is what they had to be before.
Okay, so 0.21 divided by two would have still been over 0.1, not 0.05.
Right.
You'd be more than just divide them in two.
Yeah, as you can see, the, the common area next to that sinkhole, that kind of pushed those lots over to the east a little bit as well. So just like I said, some of the lots were, see that lot line kind of went through right the middle of the sinkhole there. We just reconfigured some of the lot. Generally, we split them in half, but we also kind of pushed everything around to get that additional common area as well.
Yeah, and if we approve a 0.05 common area for the whole PUD, that means you could put 296 units on here. You would not be required to keep it to the way it is. Is that correct?
No, we're, we're limited by the 5.2 units per acre, which allows us to do the 190 maximum.
Okay.
So we can't do any additional.
Okay, I appreciate that. Thank you.
Okay, any other questions, Commissioner Giffens, for staff or the petitioner?
Not at this time. I guess I just am not the, even with 12 different façades, you come up with repeating that at least 15 times throughout this. And so I don't feel like that, again, leads to sort of the, the intent of the current zoning, which is that it should look like it's kind of organically grown and been developed.
And on that note, Ms. Nestor Jellin, would you review, please, the planning department's perspective on this petition?
Sure, and I also pulled up on the screen, hopefully you can see it, part of the packet with the actual outline plan, which is what you will actually be voting on. So, you know, we put together PowerPoint that summarizes this, but encourage you to read through this. This is a legal document that they would be, would have to abide to, and then, you know, with the commissioners' ordinance signature and conditions. But I'll go ahead and read through the final staff recommendation for this petition that then was voted on by the.
Bottom of the first page, I believe.
So, yes, so the recommendation made by staff was a denial based on the findings of fact subject to the Monroe County Highway and Drainage Engineer MSR Coordinator Reports, specifically finding B in the report, which states the extent to which this proposal departs from the zoning and subdivision regulations such as density dimension, bulk use, required improvements, and construction and design standards.
All right, thank you for that. All right, let's go ahead and see if there's anyone that wants to offer public comments on this item. And first, we will start with, we want to hear from those who are in favor of this petition. Please raise your hand if you're in favor of this petition. Click on the raise hand feature on the Zoom screen. Looks like we have a couple, okay. All right, Mr. Shelton.
Well, good morning again. Jim Shelton with the chamber. We don't really take position on individual projects, but we want you to consider, as you consider this, the fact that we, we very badly need more housing in our community. And I guess the other thing is that this is an area that even the county says is part of our urbanizing area. So please consider those as you deliberate and evaluate how you will vote on this. Thank you.
Thank you. Let's see, we have Mr. Landis. Good morning.
Hello, good morning. I would also like to support this project. I do agree about the demand of housing in this city. I've experienced it myself, as my wife and I have tried to find affordable places to live. And it's quite challenging to find that. I understand there are traffic concerns. I understand there are change concerns. I also would like to support growth and development in our community, which, in my perspective, we need it not just in Bloomington, but all across the country. The most recent statistic I saw said, across the country, we are 20% underbuilt. And to me, that's a problem. I know there are a lot of people who would love to live in this community who are not able to. And I think if we have more options for them, that brings housing prices down, that stabilizes some things, and it gives greater variety for more people to be in our community, and I support this project. Thank you.
Thank you. Let's see if there is anyone else who wishes to support, offer comments and support of this project. You would be limited to three minutes per person. I do not see any. Is there anyone here who wishes to speak in opposition to this petition? It looks like we have one. Margaret?
Hello, first of all, I'd like to thank Mr. Wineiger for all of his good efforts and for his good intentions as far as providing affordable housing in, for our community. And I mean, when I say affordable, I don't mean it in the strict sense of the word as far as HUD is concerned, but meeting the need of young, starting families. My primary complaint about this prop, this development is that it's on complex sinkholes, and there are close to 20 sinkholes, I think, on the property, and we find new ones from time to time. The front yard setback is such that cars will probably be hanging over the sidewalks. The density has doubled, and we're in a rural area. And this isn't really the kind of house people want to live in. So I think that people will still be driving from out of the county. And then finally, we have to think about social services that have to be provided in a dense subdivision like this, police, fire, et cetera. And it's, I don't think we can add that much with our current shortage in personnel for security services. And then also, building on this kind of land with homeowners association responsibility for big-ticket items like drainage adds an unforeseen burden to people who are in the most risky category of losing their home. They would stand to possibly have an assessment that could place lean on their home if they couldn't afford to pay it. I don't think this is the point at which we get into a discussion about wages and, and housing supply, et cetera. I happen to think that we've oversupplied housing in Bloomington and Monroe County, and that we've incurred so much tax debt that that's the problem, that and wages as far as the affordability issues that we're facing. But I don't think the answer is to place these young, starting families with, who are beginning on their career at the highest risk. And so I also would go with the staff recommendation to deny this proposal, but I do it with the utmost appreciation for the builder and for the employers in their intent to serve young families. Thank you.
Thank you, Margaret, and see if there's anyone else who wishes to speak in opposition to this petition. All right, I do not see any. Let's come back to staff. And also, Commissioner Giffens, do you have any other questions or comments you wish to make? Commissioner Giffens?
No, thank you.
Do you, do you need more time to consider this petition?
I, I just don't, I don't believe, I'm sorry, I, I'm a skeptic, I apologize. But just using the IU Credit Union stuff, even without utilities and anything else, it would take an income of $26 an hour to afford a $250,000 home. It just doesn't fit with what's being described here at all. And, and I think if, if more expensive homes are built that people who are moving up can move into, that that, the homes that they sell will perhaps fill some of that niche of affordable housing that we do need. I'm not denying that. I, I agree that we need it. So I, I'm really torn about this.
Yeah, it is, it is a tough, it is a tough thing. But I think the key is in what was said about homes under 250,000 are not available in this community that are year or newer. And that's the key there, because there are homes in the community that are more affordable. There is a housing rebalancing, I guess, that's going on across the country. And Monroe County is not unique in seeing home prices increase and in seeing a shortage of available homes for sale. That is a function of the economy, more so than a function of housing. And if, if interest rates were, you know, 5% tomorrow or 6% tomorrow, we would be wondering why we have all these homes sitting empty. It is, it is a, it is more of an economic function than anything else, and it is a function of wages. If you, if you want to make a house affordable, then pay a wage that, that ensures that people can get into the houses that are available in the area. I do see the need for more housing in a, in a difference, with a range of available pricing and available sizes, you know, large lawns, smaller lawns, whatever. I do see that. I, I personally really don't like to see subdivisions come in where everything looks the same. And that's something that's in our, our, that's noted by the planning staff in their recommendation of denial. This is a lot of housing on not a lot of space. We are the county. Again, we're not the city. We are the county. And we have to consider the structural integrity of the surround, of the land underneath this with all of those sinkholes. That has always concerned me the most about this is the sinkholes and trying to build around it and squeeze homes around sinkholes. That's, that's frightening. I would add in to what Commissioner Giffens noted about the cost, that there is also the HOAP that gets, gets folded into a monthly cost to, to live in a house. And again, we cannot require even, and as much as I admire the intentions of this petitioner, we can't require that houses come in at a certain sale point. And even if they did, once they're sold once, we wouldn't be able to control that. So there's no way, we can, we can hear the intention. I appreciate the intention. But I think it's, we can't, we can't control that. This is not an affordable housing development in terms of a HUD criteria. This is not Section 8 housing. This is something different. And it is, and I do appreciate the hard work of the petitioner and the, the petitioner's representative, as we've worked through this a long time. This is project has been on the table for a very long time. As we've worked through various iterations, trying to ensure that, you know, traffic, roadways, everything else is covered. They've made some good changes, and certainly do appreciate that, and that's what makes this fun. So I am in that really difficult position where I have to not only look at, you know, what's needed today, what's needed in five years, but I also think, what is this going to look like in 20 years? What is this going to look like in 50 years? Is this something where we're going to say, well, that was the best decision for this particular piece of land? And I'm, and I just can't get over that line myself. We do have to consider the surrounding areas, and we do have to consider the fact that, that this is not the kind of development that we foresaw when we, we started, when we worked through our, our planning and zoning processes. Because we don't want a cookie cutter look. And so that makes this really a very, a very difficult thing. So with that, are you ready for a vote, Commissioner Giffens?
Yeah, I'd just add that, and I'm reading through all the things that have been sent to us, that the comprehensive plan calls for more of a block pattern design to promote the interconnectivity, and I, I don't see that here either.
Yeah, that's a good point. It makes it harder to get around for a pedestrian. And it also changes this, the way that the layout looks. Yeah. All right, so with that, unless Ms. Nestor Jellin has anything that she wants to add at this time? Okay, thank you so much. Mr. Cockrell, will you please call the roll on ordinance 2021-22?
Commissioner Thomas?
No.
Commissioner Giffens?
No.
Motion fails, 02.
Thank you so much. Thank you, everyone. Thank you so much. Thank you, everyone. And we don't have any appointments today. I have, I'm going to get my light going here because I've got, it's getting dark outside. I have a couple of quick announcements, just a note for anyone in the county who is a resident, who is struggling to pay for rent or utilities or other necessities, to remind you that the township trustees have been provided with additional funding to help. And that's only through the end of this month, June. So if you need assistance, please contact your township trustee. We've worked as board with the county council to provide this funding, and we're really proud of the Township Assistance Fund. But if you do need assistance, contact your township trustee. You have a township trustee, you live in a township, no matter where you live in the county, city, town, or rural. So contact them for assistance. Time is of the essence. I'll also note that all of, we're accepting applications for all of our boards and commissions. So please go to co-monroe.in.us. You can check out boards and commissions. You can look at the information on each board and commission, see what's a good fit. But then you'll find the application. Please do so. The criminal justice reform study, June twenty third at five thirty, that reform study will be presented via Zoom. Check out the calendar at co-monroe.in.us. This is the long anticipated report from our consultants. So we're really excited to be part of that. And we're grateful for all the work of staff to get us to this point as well. Did you have anything else, Commissioner Giffens?
No, I just wanted to add that the township assistance thing can be for more than just rent or utilities. If there are things like huge medical bills, that is also available. And so we are trying to keep people housed. And yeah, anything that we can do to make that happen is what that's that's our intent here.
Yeah, absolutely. And and it's been a great program. We really appreciate all the work of the township trustees throughout the COVID pandemic to help our residents. And really, it is basic, it's for all basic necessities. I tend to say that, and I did not say it at this time. So yes, basic necessities. We want to keep everybody housed and with their utilities on. The History Center garage sale is at four oh one five Profile Parkway, June eleventh and twelfth from eight to four thirty and June fourteenth from eight to one. So go find your newest treasure and help support our great Monroe County History Center.
And can we, can we say something about the drive-through food things that?
Yes, please. Yes, good, please.
Yes, does that that starts this Friday, and they'll be doing it, I think, every other Friday through at least mid-August. And we are very, very fortunate to have people like Hoosier Hills Food Bank here to help support us. They not only have the these kinds of drive-through food distributions, but they distribute food. I think it's a six-county area through different food pantries throughout the area. So just a shout out to everybody who who helps with that and volunteers with it. But if you're in need, all you have to do is show up and it, I, if it's like before, it will be a no-contact distribution as well. Things are already boxed. You open the back of your vehicle and volunteers will put things into into the vehicle for you.
Yeah, so contact Hoosier Hills Food Bank for more information on the dates and times. And it is going to be something where you will probably see a commissioner or two or three helping out. So I would love to see you there. I'm working on my my box coating muscles to get to get in good shape for food season. No, it's it's a really great cause and it's an amazing opportunity to to ensure that that our community is fed. So it's it's really a great cause, and we really appreciate the great folks at Hoosier Hills Food Bank. Is there anything else, Commissioner Giffens?
No, thank you.
Okay, well, with that, I'm going to adjourn this meeting. And we have a work session. And may I ask that we come back at eleven fifty five for the work session? Excellent, great. We we are adjourned, and our next meeting is June sixteenth, twenty twenty one. And our work session begins at eleven fifty five AM. Thanks, everyone.